Greetings and happy 4th of July vacation week to everyone out there. Okay, because we're all scrambling, all running back. I literally just drove back from Mexico last night. It's some hour that day that I don't want to talk about. So it's all good. We have great guests today. We have, of course, Karina Clever. Big round of applause. If you don't listen to Karina Clevers, twice a week, GRC sessions, you really should. And Karina, feel free to promote that in the LinkedIn. Okay, or hand it to Nausea, and she will. And of course, the real world CISO, right on there, Kelly Gilmore. Okay, this guy knows his stuff. And he's going to be, when we answer the questions, he's going to say, in the real world, X, Y, Z. Now, something fun today. We have Bill Lauterback, our Director of Channels for UAT. He's going to be reading the questions and I will be responding because, well, I already took the test. And so I have some thoughts on it and all that. So Bill's been gracious enough to be trained for five minutes before this and to jump on and do it. So Bill, let's jump into it and I appreciate your support. So this is domain four, risk optimization. Why don't I pause a sec and have Karina tell the world, what does risk optimization mean?
So there's two types of risks we have to kind of keep our eye out on. There's ethereal risk, right? Where we may have a brick fall on our head. We may have an earthquake in Los Angeles. We may have, you know, credit, something happen, reputational risk. There's also the real risk of managing the output of failed controls. So if you think about your GRC program and you think about the documents with the controls in it that execute at certain particular timelines, when they're well-written controls, you know if they failed. If they fail, they hit your risk registry. If they hit your risk registry, you now have something tangible to actually look at and execute against when you're deciding on what you want to prioritize. Really, how big of a risk is this? Does this have any impact to our lines of business? Does this have an impact to our, you know, company as a whole? And in what manner? Maybe it's affecting data. Maybe it's affecting security. Maybe it's affecting the golden egg of your company finances. So what's very important to do is to manage those risks appropriately. So you've got kind of part of it is this framework-based risks of things could happen to you that you ought to be prepared for. Like, I'm not seeing anyone prep for a Securities Exchange Commission disclosure on a breach. That workflow is not continuous. That incident manager who receives an alert that forwards it over to potentially HR, legal, finance, who's doing that disclosure? And what does that workflow look like, right? Have you managed that risk that says, I know how to disclose to the Securities Exchange Commission? God forbid, an analyst in the socks is there and picks up the phone and calls Securities Exchange Commission. So risk management is about identifying as many of your potential risks as possible, and even real risks. And now you take that list and you wrap a project plan around it. Waterfall, great. Agile, super. Kanban, okay. I don't care what you use. Use something so that you can actually create some mitigating efforts in steps, supporting the minimization of that risk for your overall operations. That is going to hop over up into that continual improvement cycle and update your documents. And it's going to be that cycle of true risk optimization that blends in with your existing controls, any mitigation, and then your continual improvement.
Fantastic. Let's get started. All right, Bill, take it away. I'll do this. You read it away.
Question one. Which of the following is the most important to enable executive management to make educated risk response decisions? Is it A, risk communication? B, risk framework? C, risk ranking? D, risk committee? Or E, all of the above?
There you go. There you go. Kelly, why don't you go first?
Sure. My answer to this particular one, I have not taken the test. So, you know, there that is, would be risk communication. Effective risk communication ensures that your executives receive timely and clear and, most importantly, relevant information about risks. Risk communication. To me, that's the only real answer. The risk framework, risk ranking, and risk committee, of course, are all very important components. But the most important is indeed making sure your communication, your executives know what's going on regarding risk.
And Karina?
No, you go next.
Okay, I haven't taken the test. I look at it and I go, it's, they say, risk communication. And I'll let Bill tell you the ISAC reasons or whatever. And I'll look at something in this. There is something in the ISAC test. And it's really important, y'all, to listen, to y'all listen to Karina and Kelly. That's the only way I pass. Because only about 5% of these questions will actually be on there. Whereas the dialogue and the understanding of it will be. And you have to, you know, use that wonderful brain that we have to dust off to pass this thing. So they're real big on the concept of being, the whole point of the CGIT and the whole point of governance is to facilitate the communication between the different levels of management and employees and the different avenues of the corporation. Right, Karina?
So, yes. So what I'm going to actually do is I'm going to kind of talk about the risk committee, the risk ranking, the risk framework.
Oh, nice.
These are all pieces of risk management, right? So when you have, excuse me, that risk framework that you're working up against, you, it can fluctuate from company to company. It's a tool. It's inside that toolbox called risk management. Your risk ranking, also, you have a ledger of identified risks. You may have some production risks. You may have some failed control risks. You may have some framework risks. You have a bunch of risks. Sometimes I walked into rooms, we'd have a list of 3,000 risks, and we start ranking them. Your specific company ways of ranking them is incredibly important. Impact, urgency. That's your standard ITL combination to prioritize your actual, what you're working on next. But you may have other elements inside your risk ranking mechanism. The cost, the resources, the impact to the business, the general ROI, right? On, we're going to put in 10 grand, but all of these customers want this feature set and they're going to upsell. So on our 10 grand, we're going to make, I don't know, 10 million. Great, Lord willing. Now, risk committee is another element of that risk management toolbox. One of the tools. You've got your people that are sitting in this committee, like almost like a steering committee, if you've been in the PMO space, right? This is now a risk committee that sits and decides on those rankings and really how to proceed and how to prioritize with that. So communication is definitely the right answer on this one because they need to know what they're going to pay for and what the biggest risk to their business is, right? That's kind of what they're signing up for and what they're wanting to know all about.
And Bill, what does ISAC say?
All three of you are correct. Open communication regarding IT risk will promote the understanding of risk to executive management. Risk communication is a key part in the process of creating a risk-aware culture in the enterprise.
You nailed it. There we go. All right, we are cranking. Question number two. Take it away, Bill. I'm not reading those things.
Which of the following is the best reason to implement a risk management framework? A, reducing IT risk? B, facilitating communication? C, reducing enterprise costs? And D, providing risk reporting?
Who wants to?
Bill, you have to pick somebody. Bill, pick somebody.
Okay. I'm Karina. I'm going to alternate everybody.
All right, I'll grab it. I'll grab this one then. So this is really an expansion of the question we just had, right? So, again, that communication, you have to be able to communicate. So if we look at the key words kind of in this question, framework, risk management framework. It's your framework, right? And so if we think about that previous answer about how we have to communicate, we're going to be facilitating that communication in order to do that implementation because that framework is only going to give us guidance, right? So we want to make sure to appropriate those risks for us specifically and see whether or not they're real risks or maybe perceived risks. Or we want to do an assessment on a risk or we want to test the risk. There's a lot you can do with risks. But basically facilitating communication is the one that I would actually pick on this.
All right, let's go, Garrett.
Well, you know, I kind of answered in the one before. They really feel the best reason, that's the way I look at it, the best reason to implement risk management framework was facilitating communication. It's supposed to create a dialogue of this, of the proper vernacular between the groups.
Kelly?
Yeah. Risk management frameworks, NIST RMF, ISO 310,000, or yeah, I think that's right. COSO, et cetera. They, their purpose is to provide a structured approach to not only identifying and assessing and managing risk, but also communicating risks. And so, you know, as far as what to look for as far as communicating risk, you know, the framework you've defined and decided which best meets the company's needs and goals and strategies, that's going to be the most effective way to communicate risk. So facilitating communication would definitely be my answer as well.
Well, that is correct. And they say, the risk management framework provides common language among all stakeholders.
Stakeholders. I love that word. Take it away. Yes.
So, question three. Which of the following is most important to consider when designing a control framework? Is it A, risk appetite? B, work instructions? C, employee morale? Bring in the beer. B, monitoring requirements? Garrett, you start with this one.
I give the answer and I give a little what they say. And then I let the other guys comment on it. So they're going to go with a risk appetite. Okay? And it's real, a thing. They, remember, the test is written for how a CISO should be conducting business. And so what it's supposed to do is guide you. Supposed to think of the questions that way and then you'll do better. It's supposed to be, okay, if I'm the CISO of this company, what do I have to do when they're doing a framework? Well, the first thing they say is that you should go survey your own company, especially the board and the stakeholders. And you say, where are you at? Are you guys good with this? I mean, how clamped down we got to be? Are we going to be, you know, basically NSA? Or are we going to be, you know, here? And of course, that's going to cost you. So they say, here we go. We got to first go with our risk appetite. So I say A.
All right. Kelly?
I would definitely agree. Risk appetite is everything. And in my reading of, you know, Cisgitt and just the other trainings that I've had, risk appetite is the start of everything. Understanding what you are trying to protect and why it's important to protect it and how much of an appetite your, you know, the powers that be, the executive, the board, CEO, CFO, understanding, you know, what their point of view is and what their appetite is for accepting risk. That's where it all starts for all of the controls, you know, specifically in a control framework.
Karina?
All right. So I'm going to agree as well here on risk appetite. So we all have to, as companies, really decide how much risk can we tolerate, right? So this kind of goes hands in hand. Your risk appetite, risk tolerance are kind of the same beast from the perspective of, I may choose to do something risky and hope it pays out, right? And hope that it works out in the end. The other, the other answers here for this question is, you know, work instructions I see is downstream. The word that I'm tagging on to, in the question here is the word designing. You're in the very beginning, right? You're just at the architect or the blueprint phase. So you're just doing the design. So work instructions are downstream on how to execute. Monitoring requirements is, considering you've already established the requirements, you haven't even established them yet at this point. You're still designing. Right, and employee morale, absolutely, that's important. But it's not, the employee morale isn't going to make or break your control framework, right? So, I mean, hopefully, you're going to have a team of people who can execute really well against what's been decided. But really, the only answer for this one is risk appetite.
And that is correct. So the official, the official answer is to set up an optimal internal control environment is best to understand the risk appetite. Once risk appetite becomes clear, the adequate investment level to be spent for implementation of a control framework can be determined.
I can roll.
All right. Question four. Which of the following best achieves risk management objectives? A, determining the level of IT-related risk that the enterprise is willing to take? B, promoting an IT risk-aware culture and empower the enterprise to proactively identify IT risk? C, reporting any risk management issues to the board or executive committee? And D, enabling key stakeholder review of the enterprise's progress towards identified goals? Let's have Kelly start this one off.
Yeah, I came into this one kind of blind, meaning I hadn't read much on this particular topic in my, in my review. And I originally leaned towards promoting an IT risk-aware culture and empower the enterprise to proactively identify IT risk as the best way to, you know, achieve the management, risk management objectives. But the A, determining the level of IT-related risk that enterprise is willing to take, or the risk appetite itself, that always comes back to being, you know, the essential thing to effectively, to effectively define what the organization defines as risk itself, which then translates to building a risk-aware culture. That's how I, that's how I see this now after, after really digesting it. Very interested to hear what Karina and Garrett.
Yeah. So I'm kind of a bit torn on this one from the perspective of, like, in my mind, I read the question and I thought, well, if we're in flight, right? And we already have these risk management objectives, there's kind of a sprinkling of all of these answers that would apply. That's kind of what made this one a little tougher for me. So if I kind of go from the bottom up, stakeholder review? Sure. We want to set that up as part of our normal risk management kind of program. We need them to know, how are we doing against the risks that have been prioritized and identified? I don't know that they'd help us really achieve our objectives. I mean, if things aren't going well, they could pout and they could slam their fist on the table. What are you guys doing, right? But I don't know that they're going to get us to those objectives, right? Any faster. When we report, and so it's kind of the same thing, right? CND is kind of this different shade of the same beast, right? We've got the stakeholder review or we've got Board of Executives. So we want to let them know, how are we doing? So maybe they might sign an extra check or assign an additional resource or give us a little bit of time to finish those risk management objectives. But they're not going to really help us achieve them. So with, same, same as with Kelly, you know, the IT risk-aware culture is super important. And if people see you walking down the hallway and they see you and they turn around and they run the other direction, not that that has ever happened to me. You know, making sure that everybody wants to participate with that is very, very important. But I am going to also agree with A because that IT-related risk, so again, that aligns with that first question we just had, right? So we're, we need to, we need to determine how much risk we're willing to take as we consider building out that risk management program and then achieving those objectives along the way.
All right. Thanks. Garrett?
Yeah. And because that was a great discussion about real world from Kelly and Karina. But the test stuff, the key is objectives. So that's why I reread this one a couple of times, is objectives. And so it's B.
It's B?
It's A.
Oh, I mean, there you go. So I got it wrong. Thank God it was three weeks ago.
So, so it says, determining whether the enterprise's risk appetite is appropriate and ensuring that the risk to the enterprise value related to the use of IT is identified and managed best achieved, is identified and managed best achieve risk management objectives. That makes no sense at all to me. It's a bunch of mumbo jumbo, but it is A.
It's A. Okay, that's why we have you, Bill. Well done. Thank you. Let me make sure it was finished here. It's A. Okay.
So five.
Take it away, Bill. Number five.
Which of the following roles is accountable for determining that the enterprise's IT risk management framework is aligned to the enterprise-rich risk management framework? Is it A, the CEO? B, the CIO? C, the CAO? There's a new one, Chief Audit Officer. And, or D, the Chief Information Security Officer, the CISO. Let's go, Garrett.
God, it's really, God, putting me in a spot again here. Because you're comparing the entire corporations. And the key word, of course, here is the IT risk management. Use the IT in the entire companies. So I'm going to say CEO.
Okay. Kelly?
This one's hard because it kind of depends on, you know, as Garrett just said, for the entire organization. So determining the enterprise IT risk management framework is aligned to the enterprise-rich risk management framework. So it's kind of a, it's a bit of a, it's hard to process that question in my mind. But the thing that tricks me up, and I believe the, my answer is the incorrect answer, but I'm going to stick by my guns. In my world, the CIO is responsible for overseeing the organization's IT strategy, which includes the, you know, the IT risk management framework and ensuring that it aligns with the business objectives of the organization, including risk management. So it's at that, the level at which the question is kind of focused. And I see Garrett's point. It seems like it's kind of at that top level. But going through this, my answer would have been CIO, for sure. Right or wrong, that's where I would have gone.
Karina?
So I'm going to say that companies have very different structures, organizational structures. And the risk group does not always fall under the same organizational branch in all groups across the world, the organization, the industry companies. So for a risk group, to me, to report to a CISO or a CIO is actually a conflict of interest. Because that risk manager is going to be incentivized to say, everything's A-OK, hunky-dory, because they want to look good for their boss. They may not also belong under the Chief Audit Officer because it's the same issue. They want to say, oh, my God, dear boss, who is the main auditor person, right? The CAO is, I found everything wrong, right? You're incentivizing me to find everything wrong under the audit group. So, so I'm going to have one extreme or another. So really, to me, the C, almost RO, the Chief Risk Officer, needs to report up into the CEO at the same level as a CISO would, as a CIO would, as a CAO would, to avoid any of those conflict of interests.
And the answer is? It is A. It is CEO is a, is a delegate of the Board of Directors and drives the entire enterprise, including IT, toward the enterprise's objectives. It is therefore the CEO's accountability to align IT risk management with the enterprise risk management framework.
Which doesn't always work that way. And that's true. We don't normally see that way because a lot of people consider risk and compliance and governance as an IT thing. And it's not just an IT thing. It's across the company, right? So, so I think that's kind of where that one came from.
And also, in some organizations such as mine, we have a separate risk group. And then, of course, IT and security liaise into the risk group. But from the structures that I have seen here and in other organizations, the CEO delegates the responsibility of the IT program, the IT management, for the framework to ensure that it's aligned and prove to the CEO that the risk management framework, they fit. So from that context, you know, I could see where they're kind of leaning towards the CEO as the inevitable, they're the ones that hold the final responsibility. Therefore, they're going to be the ones that are called out by the board. So I can see that.
Nice. All right. Number six. Which of the following best helps align IT risk management with enterprise risk management? Is it A, engaging resources from the business for IT risk management? B, using a common risk terminology for IT and the business? C, using a uniform measurement for likelihood and impact? Or D, embedding IT risk mitigation controls in business processes? And let's see. I think it's Garrett's turn, or Karina's turn to kick this one off.
Me? I'm still thinking. I'm still thinking. So, all right, let's decompose this one.
We can play ready golf. Anybody can jump in.
So, all right. So we've got, so I'm kind of visualizing the entire organization, the entire company, company. There's this enterprise risk management and then there's IT risk management. So basically, I'm kind of seeing IT risk management as almost a subset of enterprise risk management. So, so let's look at these questions. So, or the answers. Engaging resources from the business for IT risk management would never work because they're completely different kind of gauging points, everything, different language, different everything, right? Using a common risk terminology for IT and the business, that I would lean mostly towards because you can have common measurements across both the IT area and the business area. They just have to be carefully defined. I think this is where I always come back to that governance document that defines your documents. So like, if you define them the right way and everybody's at the table and they agree what those terms mean, that's important. Using a uniform risk measurement for likelihood and impact, it won't work because what is what is impactful um, for the business is not going to be as impactful for IT. And what is likely for the business or IT is not going to be likely for the, for the business. Embedding IT risk mitigation controls in business process. God, I'd love to see that. Um, that would be pretty cool. Um, if we could take business processes and actually have them rely uh, and include IT risk mitigation, so my heart says D. Uh, but my head says B. How's that for this answer?
Okay. Kelly?
Um, yeah, I B, um, B was, was my answer when I answered this blind. Um, using a common risk terminology for IT. And the reason that I, I selected B was because if you don't have terminology that everyone understands, you, you have no communication. Um, and you, you don't understand what risk means to all of the different participants in, you know, at the, at the enterprise level. Uh, so using a common risk terminology um, ensures that, that both, you know, IT side and the business stakeholders are speaking the same uh, language um, when you're discussing the risks. Um, plus that also, if everybody's aligned in that regard, and the word aligned was kind of the key word for me in this to, to lead me to answer B. Uh, but that alignment facilitates collaboration between the groups. If you're all aligned on the co- common language, you, you know, you can collaborate. Uh, it's easier to get to decisions, um, uh, and everybody can kind of have the same approach to risk management.
All right, Garrett?
Yeah, it is really, it, it, of course, Karina and uh, and Kelly have great points. In the Isaac viewpoint, as Kelly said, common terminology. Common terminology. And if you read the documentation or the overview for the CGIT, it goes over and over and cites, it was, Karina loves the COVID stuff, right? So we all have a lexicon, a way to talk to each other. And I have to say a shout out, one of Bill's partners that he's working with, right? Um, ComplianceRisk.io, you can look them up. They're working on coming up with, they, they have a dashboard and we send to you a test score up to that. So that the teams could communicate, right? The governance team can be, can be, can meet with the business team. So not only do I agree with the, in, in the test, but in practice of the product that is sponsoring this session, you attest.
Great. So it is B. And, and it says, using a common terminology for expressing IT risk in the bus- in business terms will help in aligning the IT risk assessment with ERM. Because IT and the business will have the same perspective and understanding of risk and rewards.
Yes.
All right. Number seven. The main reason for identifying key risk indicators is that they A, determine thresholds for monitoring risk. B, providing assurance of effective risk management. C, provide early warning of risk materialization. Easy for you to say, materialization. And D, indicate effectiveness of implemented controls. So Kelly, you're, you're up again.
I, uh, the main reason for identifying key risk indicators is that they when I read that, of course, in my mind, coming from the security perspective, I, you know, I replaced key risk indicators with indicators of compromise. Um, it's just the way I think. Um, it's just, it's just reality for me. Um, so, uh, as I was going through the, you know, the answers. Um, of course, I always go from the bottom up. Um, indicate effectiveness of implemented controls. You know, that's, that's not a reason um, for, 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 you know, identifying key risk indicators. But C, provide early warning for risk materialization. That one just, all the bells went off in my head when I read that. Um, of course, continuing on, you never want to stop at one uh, during a test. You want to make sure that, that you answer, you just got to read all of the options. Uh, provide assurance for effective risk management. Um, not, not terribly, you know, indicators or part of effective risk management, but that, there, the assurances aren't there. And determining thresholds for monitoring risk. You know, monitoring risk is, is, is not the, not the really important part there. So, uh, I couldn't, couldn't go with any other answer other than C.
Okay, Garrett?
Early warning of risk materialization. That was the one that made sense for me as a security mind. And that's, that's what I remember is they, they agreed with, you know, yes.
Marina?
Yeah. So I'm going to also uh, pick C and some of my logic was that, um, when I identify the key risk indicators, um, I want to know as early in the game as possible that something is not working. Now, I may not have had the controls yet as we have in D. Uh, perfectly defined if I do risk management first, right? Um, provide assurance of effective risk management is just way too broad of a statement. And then uh, thresholds for monitoring risk. I don't, I don't think that that really, it's again, just a real, these are just really broad statements. So I think the early warning is, is really the one I pick.
Uh, and it is C. So it says, key risk indicators best help in monitoring risk by providing early warning based on criteria determined by the organization to predict and or detect risk. Okay, number eight. What should be primarily analyzed before defining a risk management strategy? Is it A, the risk assessment methodology? B, the IT budget? C, the organizational culture and risk appetite? Or D, the IT asset inventory? And I think it's Garrett's turn to kick it off.
Um, I'm going to go with C because uh, that, that's, you know, what I would said. What should be primarily analyzed before defining the strategy is the organizational culture and the risk appetite.
Okay. Karina?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna agree. So the risk appetite is the thing I think here that is really kicking me off to kind of, um, the word before. So as we're planning our risk management strategy, we really want to talk about risk appetite. And of course, organizational culture is really important, right? Are they, are, is your team gonna play along or, or do you feel like you're gonna execute against this? The other ones are pieces of it, right? Um, doing a risk assessment. Sure, that's important. You, you've got to kind of define the strategy first. Um, and then assign a budget based on what you've prioritized. Asset inventory, IT asset inventory, okay, that's kind of like a little random. That's like that would be fine, but you know, there are things at a governance level you should already have defined, like BYOD policy, right? Um, security controls, perimeter controls, all, all of these things, those are kind of um, kind of, I think, mechanical pieces of doing the overall strategy. So I'm going to go with C.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with C of, of all three of the other options, you know, IT budget, IT asset inventory, those are, um, you know, the asset inventory has very, very little to do with, with, you know, analyzing something you'd analyze before defining your risk management strategy. Um, the risk assessment methodology is, is, that's a methodology. That's, that's one of many. Now, there's many different risk methodology. Um, so the only, the only plausible answer in my mind is the organizational culture uh, and risk appetite. And going back to some of the other questions that we've already, you know, gone over is like, understanding the the organization, though, the organization's culture and more specifically the risk appetite um, is, is crucial because it sets um, it sets the foundation for how risks are, are tolerated, managed, perceived. Um, it's, you know, within the organization itself. So definitely a C.
It is C and it says, an enterprise can accept, mitigate or transfer risk based on the risk culture of the enterprise. Risk appetite and tolerance are more measurable expressions of the enterprise's risk culture and directly drive a risk management strategy. All right. Number nine. Which of the following is the most important in selecting a risk mitigation strategy for the enterprise? Is it A, asset value and criticality? B, risk appetite and tolerance? C, threat likelihood and frequency? Or D, asset total or asset total cost of ownership? And I think we're down to, I'm losing track, but Karina, let's go with you.
So I am going to immediately take A and D off the table, right? Because sure, assets are important. Inventory management, all of these things, those are very important pieces, but I don't know that I'd consider that as I select a risk mitigation strategy. If anything has to do with assets, I would talk about um, growth potential, um, right? And, and maybe preparing enough assets to uh, be provisioned out for onboarding. You know, if that's part of our strategy is growth, for instance, so now we have to mitigate growth and say, oh, um, you know, will we have enough laptops? But that's one of a bunch of questions that you're going to ask as you're growing the company. So that is not kind of the, one of the key, um, most important thing for selecting risk ma- mitigation. Um, threat likelihood and frequency is very important. We have to keep all, uh, you know, an eye on our threats. And uh, that is kind of a whole separate competency area for your knock and your sock and your seam and your, all your tools and your threat detections. Um, but that is not what is going to be the most important thing for selecting your risk mitigation strategy. Um, so I'm going to really say it's only be risk appetite intolerance.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, I, I, my, my answer was B as well. Um, you know, like Karina, A and D were off, off the list immediately. Threat likelihood and frequency, my mind kind of toyed with those a little bit. Um, as well, threat likelihood and frequency are, are, they're, they're very important. Um, you know, within risk management, understanding the likelihood of a risk and the frequency of that. Um, however, everything to do with, with your strategy is based upon, you know, how the, how the organization interprets the risk. Um, so if it's an acceptable level of risk exposure, um, you know, your mitigation is going to be different from if it's, you know, if it's a non-acceptable risk exposure. So, yeah, I would, I would definitely select B.
Garrett?
Uh, B. It'd be, once again, risk, risk appetite. Take it away.
So it is, uh, it is B. Risk mitigation strategies are adopted to minimize residual risk to an acceptable level. Risk appetite and tolerance are key considerations in developing risk mitigation strategies. All right. Number 10. When establishing IT risk management practices, which of the following inputs is most important? Shouldn't that say are most important? Um, is it A, enterprise risk management plans? B, risk analysis results? C, regulatory requirements? Or D, IT risk management policies? It's all you, Garrett.
Yeah, I, I'm going to go with D because it's policies turned into practices. That's, that's pretty much the theme of the, uh, of, of the course. So I'm going to go with D.
With D. Okay. And Karina?
I'm actually going to go into uh, plans create practices. Uh, so, so it's not regulatory requirements because every single regulation framework out there says you should do risk management. So it's not that one. Um, if I'm establishing, uh, I'm establishing, so the second word in the question is establishing. I don't have results yet, so that takes B off the table. Um, because uh, but I can kind of see policies, but actually it's the plans. The plans dictate the practices. So I'm going to go with A.
Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Yeah, I struggled with this one. Um, my, my answer to this was, was B, actually, risk analysis results. And the reason for that, in my mind, risk analysis results provide um, insights into the IT risks that are relevant. Um, and impactful to my organization. Um, that informs the development of, of an effective IT risk management practice. Um, tailored to those, those identified risks. But enterprise risk management plans provide um, strategic direction, I guess would be the way I would say it for, for managing risk across the organization. Um, and the, they, they don't often go into specific IT related risks in great depth and detail where risk analysis uh, does. So that, that was kind of my thinking behind selecting answer B.
Well, it's A. And it says, IT risk management practices should align with the enterprise risk management in parentheses, ERM.
So the answer is A. So, uh, Karina, since you gave A, glad you go with this is a good one of why you chose A.
Because um, policies are kind of in the middle of plans and practices. Right? So practices, I mean, seeing this word, the word practices in this question is, is that, is a control. Actually, an executable control. So I've got a plan. I'm going to build a house. My policy says I'm gonna make sure to pull a permit and do it legally. But my practice, my actual control is, I'm gonna, you know, use approved tools. I'm gonna wear a hard hat at the, at the job site. I'm going to have a blueprint. I'm going to have, right? So the practice is almost the executable control. So to me, it starts with a plan. It's almost like the question we had a few back that said, we want to use the same language, right? Between IT and then the business. This is almost the same kind of thing. We have the enterprise risk management that uses common language with IT, but IT executes on those practices. And enterprise has the plan.
Okay.
Okay. Number 11. Which of the following best indicates the risk management supports that risks or indicates that risk management supports the business strategy? Is it A, time between detection, reporting and incident response? B, external and internal customer satisfaction ratings? C, number of service calls, change requests and fixes? Or D, number of high impact incidents and complaints? Kelly?
This is a tricky one, my God.
Yeah. This one, um, so I, 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 I do know what CJ considers the right answer. Um, but I'm not going to go there. Um, my answer and the reason behind it um, was answer A, which is time between detection, reporting and incident response. So my mind, that was the best indicator that risk management supports the business strategy. Um, you know, it's, it's like the metric reflects how efficiently risks and incidents are detected, reported, responded to within the organization. Um, and that, that's all based upon the strategy. So it just, it seemed to make the most sense um, to me, uh, at the time now. Um, well, I won't, I won't, I won't ruin anything for anyone else, uh, on the panel. So I'll, I'll leave it there and then maybe I'll come back after, after the answers you brought up.
All right, Garrett?
Oh, let's think how the test is written and how they, uh, look at the answers in its B then. External, internal, uh, customer satisfaction ratings. They're, they're trying to sell that governance, governance has value to the enterprise. And this is something I gotta read in this and read in studying. Has value to the enterprise because it translates business value into IT practices. So the one, the answer that most reflects that philosophy is B, external and internal cu- customer satisfaction ratings.
Okay, Karina?
Yeah, and see, I wouldn't have picked that one because, um, well, first, it takes a certain type of a culture to actually have well, or an active, well-engaged customer sat collection, right? Um, not all companies can pull this off. Um, a lot of companies don't even know really who their customers are, right? So I think defining the fact that you know how your services and IT are aligned to that business strategy. I think, you know, you kind of gotta make that happen first. And then almost get buy-in from the business to say, I commit to giving you customer sat, you know, opinions that are gonna be recent. So that, that seems a little far-fetched, um, to me now. Uh, D, I'm gonna exclude because there are some users who just complain all the time, right? And, um, you know, the number of tickets that some one person may, may enter in a week might be more than the entire department, the rest of the department might open in a few months. So that one is too subjective. Um, number of service call change requests and fixes is the one that I was gonna actually pick, uh, which was number C because if you're getting messaging out there appropriately to whoever your end-users are, uh, that, you know, and you're, you're refreshing the production environment and you're continuing to fix the environment to satisfy those requests. To me, that was kind of the great indicator. Um, I hear what you're saying, Garrett, on B. And then I hear what you're saying, Kelly, on A. So I know it's not the tactical answer that has to do with a number, though. It's kind of somewhere in my head, right? I know that we're at this ethereal level of, you know, uh, business strategy alignment to tactical risk management. But, um, I'm, I'm actually gonna stick with C.
Okay, the answer is B and it's a long answer, too.
That's why Garrett passed the test. Go ahead, read it too.
Customer satisfaction is a direct KGI reflecting the ultimate accomplishment of an enterprise's objectives. It is also one of the main per- perspectives of a balanced scorecard that can be used in order to set up a performance management system for risk management. Senior slash executive management is only interested in measurements that show the impact of mission-critical areas. Customer SAT is the most important issue listed.
Yeah, I give a thumbs up there, not because I got it right, but because, uh, I, I'm, I'm a big fan and, and, and you attest a big fan of a balanced scorecard. Is taking the products that the, and in both Kelly and Karina agree, taking the products that we're all using, right? Having them come up with some kind of metrics and then feeding it, feeding it into a single dashboard. So we can see if we're doing better or worse and then can apply our resources accordingly. And the CGIT is a big fan of the, uh, business scorecard as, as have we. Okay, we're cracking.
Number 12. Which of the following is the most important common area of risk among enterprises? Is it A, investment, uh, investment financial risk? B, credit risk? C, market risk? Or D, operational risk? And I think we're up to Garrett.
Yeah, I don't need.
Wanna go, Karina?
No, I want Karina and Kelly to go first.
Go ahead.
But I want to hear them talk about it.
I actually, I actually do want to go on this one. So, so look, so, um, so the clear answer on this one is, is operational risk, right? Because it is the only very clear succinct risk that can be derived from very clearly succinctly written controls in our operational environment, in our functional groups. Whether in your functional group that does the work, you have a vendor, you have a system, you have a building of people, a department of people. That operational risk is really the largest possible risk. Now, when, at the very beginning of the session, when I was really talking about the different types of risk, right? I was talking about there's this ethereal risk and this practical, tactical, actual risk. Um, the first three fall under this ethereal risk. Now, even ISACA, right, has, um, an IT risk framework. So they talk about things like strategic risk, environmental risk, market risk, credit risk, operational risk, compliance risk. So there's all of these kinds of framework risks that are out there. And we do need to consider them as we're writing and creating our risk management program. But the real risk that we want to get a handle on the most is that operational risk that is bound to happen. Because there's probably a control that isn't well-written. There's probably someone that wants a policy exception for, for whatever reason, they can't adhere to the policy, right? There's some vendor that has a failure point in their delivery to you or what you've expected of them to fulfill for you, they haven't done. Or, um, th- there's a myriad of, of things that we make assumptions on when we define our risk management program. But A through C are really those kind of ethereal risk items and, and D is the only real answer here.
Kelly?
Yeah, I, I, I agree completely. I've, I've worked in services, technology, and now financial, you know, industries. And in all three of those, those different industries, the most common area of risk is, is, and well, it's pervasive across all of those types of organizations, um, is operational risk. Uh, and it's, you know, it's, it's making a, a critical focus, you know, area for effective risk management strategies is, you know, uh, is, is, is a big part of that. Internal, you know, investment, the financial risk, credit risk, market risk, those are, those, those are kind of dependent upon the industry you're in. Um, you know, which includes like internal or external fraud. Uh, you know, business disruption kind of, you know, goes across the board to systems failures. Those are all, you know, risks that kind of fall under operational risk and that kind of, kind of goes across all the industries.
Garrett?
Yeah, in- insider threat, so it's D. But I wanted to also add, I mean, that's pretty much you attest does, it looks at your, your, your users and then says, hey, you know, th- 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 these people are overprivileged. And they can be overprivileged, Karina, to where they have access to the recipes, right? There was a.
And that's right, absolutely. And that's identifying and knowing where's your golden egg. That's data declassification, right? We always got to start with data classification. Because I might have grandma's recipes that are precious and ancient and, you know, I've built a business on and have millions of followers over because that's the only recipe in the whole wide world. Or I might have the junky recipe everybody else does and who cares if that gets lost, right? So.
The audience, I'm referencing Karina told a GRC story where a secretary was literally printing out the recipes of, of a place she was auditing and, and doing, selling them, you know? And what it is, you know, start with your data, have your access policies, provide governance like a tool that you attest to make sure who has access and enforce that.
No, the access is critical. Logical access controls is just one of the most critical things. And I think one of the things that I really like about UA test, the termination, right? So I'm seeing more and more SOC twos that have termination failures, especially for contractors because they bypass HR. So to have a platform that can actually show all of the folks entering it and who has what level of access, absolutely critical. Do we have any questions?
Nazia, we have questions? She says nothing so far. So let's do.
It was D. It was D, you guys are all right.
Okay, we'll do one more, we'll skip a bit, this. Anyway, this is the last one.
Risk, risk assessment in any software development process should be performed. A, in the requirement stage. B, at every stage of software development. C, in the design and development stage. Or D, in the testing stage to avoid any potential shortcoming. Garrett, you want to take that one?
As a software guy, every stage. There we go, straight up. There it is. Go with Kelly, he's a software guy.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you there a hundred percent, Garrett. We, we both learned that one a long time ago.
Yeah, there you go, there we go. Yeah, ask SolarWinds.
All right, go ahead, uh, Karina.
Same thing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the exact same thing. It's gotta be at every stage, you gotta be considerate of it.
Yeah, all right. Well, everybody's wrong. It is C. No.
Was it? No.
Am I on the wrong one?
No, 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 I, I skipped over one. I skipped over one. 14, 14. I just, I, I still.
Oh.
It's, it's, they're looking 14. So I'm good.
It's C.
No, 14, 14 is B. 14 is B.
14 is B? Am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, you have to go, I skipped one for no reason.
Oh, you skipped one, you're killing me.
No reason at all, just to, uh, create trouble.
Okay. We are, we, we are good on that one then.
Karina and Kelly, you're rocking.
It is B.
The audience is getting something to this because remember, I got tons out of this. It, it's the discussion, the concepts that helps. And Bill, you'll be required next week because this was a lot more fun for me. I enjoyed this. All right, so you did a great job. Thanks, Bill.
All right, happy July 4th, everyone, thank you so much.
Everybody's.
July 4th.
Yes.
Have a great holiday.
Have a great holiday, bye, guys.
Kids blow off those fire workers when us adults can do it, come on.
Bye.